Call meeting to order.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under our liberty and justice for all.
For the minutes. Motion is there a second? Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carried, approve the agenda.
So good.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All same sign. Carry it. There are visitors and delegations. Yes.
Yeah, I just got a couple of things to say. Somebody informed me yesterday after the city council meeting that a member of this board told a citizen to shut up. I just want to remind the commissioner, indeed everyone who works for the county, everyone that works on this office, but when I go back to the city, that you work for the people of the county. You are employed by the people of the county. They are your employers. Sooner or later, they can, as your employers, get tire revit and ask for recall or whatever other measures are necessary. I found it rather disturbing. And we just ask that you keep that in mind when you deal with the public. The public is feeling very disenfranchised right now on an altitude of like this.
I have one question. Do you know this to be true or is this hearsay?
I know this to be true.
Okay, you were there and you heard it?
I know this to be true.
Did you hear?
I know this to be true.
I'm asking you, did you hear? Yes or no? Just yes or no, did you hear?
I know this to be true.
Okay, okay, then I will point the finger.
It is typical of some members of the board, Mr. Lisa, and it doesn't surprise me at least.
That's possible, you know. I, I don't.
I'm not finished, sir.
Okay.
I just encourage everyone to remember that, that's all. You are employed by the people of the county, period. We are your employers. And that there is noting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Moving on.
Thank you. I'm coming before you with a request to waiver the issuance of the dram insurance. I'm gonna hand out what I signed out to our chamber members. Maybe some of you might have gotten this, I'm not sure if you do. Look at this, this was the letter that was given to our chamber members. I'm just asking that you waive the dram insurance for this event, the evening of our holiday showcase, which will just run from 4:30 to 7:30. And we aren't selling any alcohol on that evening. We're just asking them to give samples. And it's just for the few that are coming in giving samples, which would just be very few at this point. I think it's just maybe four or five, which would be Schwanz, Jerome's, the liquor locker. Actually, I think those are the only few right now that have signed up. There would be a couple of them that would be coming in. We aren't selling anything, like I said, it would just be some, maybe one ounce samples that would be going out that evening. So, none of them have dram insurance, it would be, you know, in their interest to get it because it makes sense of it. So I'm just asking the commissioner this time to waive that for the event.
Excuse me, Elizabeth, didn't we have a motion on this several years ago in spite of the memorial building?
Yes, it's in the, it was a great one.
Is that a little portfolio?
Yes, it's in your packet, yes.
Holiday. Do you think generally they use that as 40 dollars for alcohol?
Excuse me? Oh, under your.
Pay charge.
Yep, and we would be paying the fees as the memorial building would be to hook up, you know, your fee. But we're just asking for the waiver under the insurance because we would not, you know, like, we aren't having pros come in and sell or anything like that to set up as a sale. So none of them would be selling anything for the life of the event. Just like, like the city does for us for our wine lock, very similar to that. We don't sell anything during our wine lock. They just come in and they have samples of it, so it's kind of similar in that. We hope to have, you know, very similar to the wine lock where we're hoping to have maybe 300 people come through. And, and, you know, for that, I think it's a very good thing for us to have our retail and the businesses highlighted in that way. So, we're just seeing if, it would be something the commission wanted to press and wait and just for that form was a reason.
I, I'm in full agreement with what you're saying. I have a question for Lani. If somebody should come into this just under and if they're just over, could the county be held responsible? If they, if they're not covered, if they don't buy the insurance and they're not covered, could we be held responsible?
When, nothing prevents anybody from suing anyone at any time. The question is whether there's going to be.
Who's gonna be held responsible?
Right. So, I can't give you an answer. There is not gonna be any particular yes or no answer. It's gonna depend a lot on the facts and circumstances. If you have somebody who's serving underage people, you're gonna have issue twos, you're gonna have probably, if somebody, say if something happens, they're gonna sue everybody in creation.
Throw an umbrella up there, yeah.
And it will, it will be only 21 and over that will be allowed into the event.
And everybody gets checked?
Yes, just, so very similar to our wine lock, everybody gets checked at the door. And it'll, it'll only be 21 and over that'll be in, into that event.
All what you say the city does with that wine lock, all they do?
We deal, we do the wine lock. But they didn't, they did not, we don't have to have any dram insurance and the city isn't involved in it at all in any way. But they didn't require the insurance on it.
What, what's the cost of the dram insurance?
Dave, Dave is my insurance care, Dave Velpe, for the, for the chamber. And I went to him after I talked to Candace, I believe, from her office, and said, is it something that the chamber has to get? Because she mentioned, well, she didn't give us something we could do. And Dave didn't really give me figures because he pretty much said, you don't want to do that. You know, the chamber doesn't want to have the responsibility of getting it. First of all, you don't sell alcohol, so he didn't feel it was something that we would want even get involved in for four hours. Because you, you know, a policy is written for an annual term. And he said neither will Jerome's, neither will Schwanz's, because it's a four hour event and they're not a, because they're a wholesale. So, I, I couldn't tell you, sir, what the cost would be. He said it would probably be, maybe we wouldn't get.
And the key word there is you're not selling it.
Right.
But we do hold everybody else responsible that's in there for it.
Yes. Is there any way the chamber could get like Thursdays or Pros or any of them to transfer their dram insurance while they're in there? Well, there's three of them that have it, RAs, Pros and Thursdays. And they don't, I wouldn't think they would want to be responsible for the other parties in there equally.
So when, I mean, I don't know the answer to this, but if Jerome Wholesale had, they have a couple of parties, you know, like for their farm owners and so on, they don't have dram insurance, do they?
It's a bad way to end a performance.
No, what I mean.
But it doesn't matter where you do it, you buy dram insurance. But I guess where I'm having the problem is, is we're, we're charging, oh, excuse, wait, hold on. We are charging other vendors and we demand that they have it. As long as there's alcohol.
They're not vending anything, so.
Give, give me a second. Anybody that has alcohol in this building, we're demanding that they have dram insurance.
I, I understand that, but they're selling it.
There's alcohol in the building. And when there's alcohol in the building, there's gonna be a liability. Is where I'm coming from.
So you're thinking then if the city of Devil's Lake wants to have a wine lock or the city of Minut or the city of Grand Forks, which does 12 of them with a summer, they don't have dram insurance, because I checked.
Do you know what?
That's them, and you're right, that's them and this is us, and if you want to.
I, I don't care what the city does.
Of the city.
The city's business is not my business. This is county business. And I'm just saying that we're demanding it from one group and.
Have we ever demanded it from a group that wasn't selling?
Anyone that has alcohol has to have dram insurance, neither if they're selling it or don't sell it.
So are you saying then that you've had weddings, I'm just going to add, you've had weddings, the college puts on their.
Key event.
Key event, they have dram insurance, the college buys dram insurance?
They have it through Pros, yep.
Oh.
Because Pros is.
Pros provide alcohol.
Pros is selling it. I don't think there's been anything in there that has never sold it before.
But the issue that I have is if we let one get by, since we have it in the policy, how many more are gonna come and ask for it?
I think you're over.
And if somebody does ask or get in an accident on the way home, and even if they have one or two little cups, I mean, they're gonna sue the county no matter what anyway. But if you had dram insurance, you know, that's.
There, there's somebody to step in in between and.
That's what scares me.
I, I think there's a lot of things that can come in between here that could create a large responsibility for us. Is, as far as what you're doing, do I have a problem with what you're asking for? Not at all. But I, I feel there's a lot of things that can come in between here, whether it's what they've had before, what they had after, but they did drink here. That's where I'm having a problem with the situation. On top of the situation is the policy we have written. We have a policy written that says that if there's alcohol there, you have dram insurance.
It's just like, you know, a wedding dance, I guess, where.
You know, it, it's not set up for people to get loaded up at, but do you know what? Where are we gonna grow the light?
Wow, like I'm trying to say, if you can have a wedding dance and have a groom's parents furnish the alcohol or the bride's parents furnish the alcohol and there's no charge, you know, and it goes on all night. You know, so that there's alcohol and nobody's charged, so we can't really follow that rule. The only rule, like, this says we can follow with alcohol. I mean, if there's alcohol, there's never dram insurance, I mean, there's just no other way to get it relevant, I guess. Sorry, I just, you know, I'm sure there's wedding dances over here where the groom's parents buy it all night or the bride's parents buy it all night. Nobody's selling it or other the fact the bar is, but nobody's changing hands of money, so, you know, money's not changing hands, so.
What do you do with wine lock? You know, all the businesses that participate in the wine lock, they, they're giving away samples and stuff too. How do they get away with that? And how could the county's insurance policy, you know, work with that waiver or work with that?
Well, I think, I, I don't think you typically, just as you're talking about a wedding, there is a bar set up at most weddings. I don't think most families just give out the alcohol without a bar there. So there is a bar.
There's bars, but nobody taking any cash and, you know, and groups picking up all the.
Well, typically there would be a bar at the wedding. I think this is, this event, I don't know of one that there's been at the memorial building before where there hasn't never been a cash bar or bar that's going to be set up. Nothing is going to be sold with the alcohol, it's just samples and they're just one ounce samples. There's not going to be a glass of beer or a glass of wine that's going to be sold. And if somebody's going to be walking out of the building after they're having one ounce samples and driving away, it would be very difficult to say which of those vendors with those one ounce glasses of samples they could pinpoint and say, well, I got that from Schwanz's or I got that from Jerome's out of a one ounce sample. So I think it'd be very difficult to pinpoint which one of those that, that they came back at to, soon back at. So I don't think this event would get anybody to the point of intoxication, come back at the county to sue it. I don't believe in an event like this ever took place at the memorial building to come back and do that with. So I don't think dram insurance, we can even cover that. But, you know, you guys will have to discuss, if it's something that you decide not to do, it would be completely up to you. But the wine lock, nobody, there is no bars, it's simply samples, they're very tiny, they're one ounce. They go into each business. There's no bar that sells anything. And it was just, it's set up to go into each business and bring people down into our downtown, which is set up similar to what this is, is to bring people in to see what we have to offer here in Devil's Lake.
Don't those businesses indeed have the same liability that we would have coming in the door? With people coming in the door though? You know what I mean? It's, it's the same thing.
It would be the same liability, but how are you going to say, well, I got my sample of wine from Lamont's and that's the one that made me so intoxicated I got in an accident? I believe that would be extremely difficult at any point.
And that would be the difference between those and this, is that they get all the samples from this building?
I, I think that's a very big difference is with the wine lock, you're getting one sample from one business and going off to another business. Where here, you have all the businesses and all the samples in one spot. And is there somebody that's gonna be watching and saying, okay, you've had this sample and this sample and this sample and this sample and this sample, so you don't get any more?
Geez, I hope not.
Or.
Because I was just at the wine lock.
Can, can, can they make several passes through? Is there somebody that's recording all this? You know, and, you know, I'm, I, I know I'm overshooting this a little bit, but do you know what? There's nothing.
Well, obviously we're limited to four. I mean, we're not there, you know, for eight hours, you're there for four hours and you're running through 40 different vendors. You know, we're there.
Four hours and 40 vendors?
And three of them are.
Some have wholesale.
That's it. And there's restaurants and there's merchants showing all the.
And like I'm saying, in four hours, do you know what?
It's actually only three hours, 4:30 to 7:30, so it's only three hours, but passing it here, then they're.
Yeah, I guess I'll do what I need, my time to set up. But yeah, so within that amount of time and you're going through, and hoping this is not up where, I, I don't know that we'll ever get to 40 to fill all the booths. That's my hope. At this point, we only have about 20 signed up. But you have very few of those serve alcohol, very few. Right now, we have like three. Most of them will be restaurants, most of them will be art, you know, businesses downtown. There're retail stores and other businesses, the majority though, but, but so few that are there that actually serve alcohol. I, to me, I don't think it'll prove to be any, anything that's going to be this, they have an issue, but I guess.
In all honesty, I, I don't think it'd be a big issue either. But I'm concerned about the issue that could come. I, I think it's a very small possibility, but I am a little bit concerned also about others coming back and saying, why are you letting this one go by when you charge us? I, I think we have a couple of things to look at here that we have to take into consideration. Plus, we also have the policy that we already have on what.
But why would they say, why, why did you let the chamber of Congress give away free samples, but you're charging us? What are you charging them for?
I mean, I don't understand.
Well, there's only 40 dollars. I mean, they're not paying, nobody's getting away with paying less or not paying.
I, I'm not understanding what you're asking me for.
Well, who's. I'm wondering how a, a, a bar entity could come back and say, why did you let the chamber give out samples? Well, we let you sell, what is the difference? Well, we have dram, we have dram insurance. And, and I, and I know what our policy says and I also realize that, I also realize that this city of Devil's Lake has grounded an exemption in this case with, with the wine lock. And, and I guess it's up to us.
But they don't stop on the city offices and count up.
They're, they're a large building.
But they stopped at the Heritage Center, you guys didn't have any chance to say, well, that last year.
Responsible for the Heritage Center, she writes it. And I'm writing this, but I mean.
No, she's, she's responsible for the Sheriff's Building. She's not responsible for the Heritage Center, which headquartered the wine lock.
And we did say. That Heritage Center isn't the county building, the La Grigio Heritage Center.
We don't own that building.
Who owns, who owns the Heritage Center?
Heritage Center.
Okay, but did they, did they request an exemption from the city then to have the wine lock?
I don't know. I don't get involved with the wine lock. I just.
It's up to them.
And I don't get intoxicated, I can't be, they're in an accident, I don't know.
And it, it doesn't matter whether you go to or not. I, I can go to any place, but, you know, that doesn't make it my responsibility where this is our responsibility.
It would be nice to find a solution and try to figure out how, you know, we could get exempted ourselves from, from the same problems that arise through having alcohol through our building.
I, I really feel it sounds like we have to be so afraid of everything under the world that we even have to have this discussion, but the fact is, we do.
From the legal side, it's your building, it's up to the county commission if you want to grant an exemption for the policy that the prior commission put together, that's, that's within your discretion. The only question I have, there, I'm no expert in insurance law by any stretch of the imagination. I just buy my policies and I let an insurance agent worry about my coverage. There might be a difference between dram shop insurance and general liability. Is the chamber covered? Does the chamber have a, a liability policy?
Yes.
Okay.
We have event insurance as well.
And that, would, would that cover something like this?
We have the special events insurance.
Because I know this past summer, my oldest daughter got married in Fargo. It was a non-alcoholic event, but we also rented the hall of the church there and I had to provide proof of insurance coverage and add it on as an additional insured. So perhaps if we could get that from the chamber?
Yeah.
And you could talk to your agent about just adding on for this event or making sure that this event is covered?
All my special, my special events are covered under one policy, it's special events coverage.
Is it a million? I would imagine that's a common, that's by after my house.
When, when, when does this event take place?
November 17.
That might be a possible avenue that we could consider. I think if you could do that and Lani looking over and.
Just get us a copy of your.
Make us feel comfortable that we're not gonna be under any liability that way, you know, that way it could be considered.
Your insurance agent's fine with it, I guess.
It's not dram insurance, we just have to.
And then it's called all insurance. And if you didn't sell alcohol.
Yeah, that's a key word there.
If you didn't sell alcohol, then dram insurance isn't gonna cover anyway. If you, if you go out and spend $5,000 for a dram shop insurance policy tomorrow and you have that event on, on November 17th and you didn't sell any alcohol, your dram insurance isn't gonna cover one cent, nothing.
If the dram insurance does indeed say that this is for selling alcohol.
Well, it does, it does, because that's why Jerome Wholesale does have to have dram insurance.
Or give it all. A general liability policy.
They have a general liability policy.
Which is, yeah.
Which is exactly what you have.
You're not selling it, they're.
Which is why I think you could get.
That's why I asked about the wedding.
Right.
If groom's parents pick up the town.
Right, which is why.
You don't need dram insurance. You can set your bar up in there and have John Doe make way, take it to the bartending and there's nothing to be in charge for, you don't need dram insurance.
I'd like to post a motion that we defer this to our next meeting. And I ask you to check into the dram insurance, whether it is covered, whether it's given away or sold. Because I don't know, I'm, I don't.
We need on the sixth.
You're, you're saying this now, but I don't know, I'm just saying I don't know.
No, they're meeting on the sixth.
If you could check on that, and would that be soon enough for us to get back?
You meet on the sixth of November because of election.
If we decide not to allow it, what, what would you do?
See, yeah, actually if I. We meet on the fourth, fifth. We're meeting on the sixth because of election on the fourth. Actually, if I, as you see, the letter's already gone out and so they believe that we're having it here. And that, so if I am not having it here and I can't do it here, I would need to get back to them right away and, and find another place that I can do this and set it up. So my meeting here tonight, I was hoping I would either know so that I can get back and let them know and move forward from this point on. And I don't wanna, and I'm asking if you pressure or anything like that. And I don't think I can wait to that date because it's getting too close, because I need to find them another spot in Devil's Lake to set this up. Because there are, you know, we have halvies before out at the arena, they do allow that. And I understand, you know, this is your policy, but I can, you know, probably find another place, which I don't want. I, I, I wanna set this up in a location where it's easier for people. This would be a perfect place, it's downtown, easy for people to get to, easy for the retailers. My thoughts are, you know, to make the Devil's Lake downtown area accessible for people, a place where, you know, they feel they can go to and that's why we were looking at the memorial building. If this isn't going to work, I need to know. And like, again, I'm not, I don't wanna pressure anybody, but if it's not gonna work, then I would probably need to let them know. When you talk about the arena, what arena are you talking about? The Peterson Arena? That's where, that's a lot that we use it. This used to be called Business After Hours and maybe that's how you remember it. And so I'm revamping it into the Holiday Showcase. This is what we're doing with it, but.
What I could do then is research this for the commission. And if you could get me a copy of your coverage.
Yep, I can do that to you tomorrow.
And if you could get me a copy of your coverage and see if that should suffice with the, with, you know. It, it might, we might be playing with words as far as the phrase Graham shop insurance. Whether that just applies to the purchase or sales of alcohol and event coverage covering, uh, exposure for the county.
Oh, maybe somebody wants to make a motion right now. It's, I, I, I would just.
We'd deal with, probably have to deal with your motion that you got already, Scott, and, but, uh, we could.
We don't have a motion.
Make a motion contingent.
We don't have a motion yet.
Like, did you make a motion? No, hell.
He just was asking for it, and I understand.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate, I appreciate the concern, I, I don't have any question about that. But now I'm wondering what the fair board's policy is on the Peterson Arena.
Oh, is, is, are you the fair board?
Do you know, Ron?
Well, no, we're not the fair board.
Anybody that has that, they've gotta have Graham insurance if they sell liquor.
Oh, oh, okay, I need to clarify, um, the pros was out at the Peterson Arena when we did this, so.
They would have had.
They had the, they had the, they got the Graham insurance.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah, cause I, I don't know, I.
I know it's, it's, we don't allow anybody there unless they do have that.
Sell, you don't allow anyone to sell alcohol unless they have Graham insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that isn't really what you asked for.
But that, so we would still need to be looking for another, um, place.
But we're, we're, we're still breaking what we have in the books, because the books say if there's alcohol involved.
But that's what we're, but that's what the motion would ask for is an exemption for this.
Like I say, if, if somebody just, I won't do it, but if somebody wants to, to do it, no, that's up to anybody else.
Simply weren't any group wishing to have alcohol as part of the.
I'm just asking for the waiver, though, I'm not asking to change your wording in your policy.
Oh, it's, it's gotta be changed if we do a waiver.
Um, I don't think so.
No, it says.
Well, we're changing it.
It says licensed vendor.
A licensed vendor.
Licensed, there isn't a licensed vendor. There is no licensed vendor.
Yeah.
Cause we're not selling.
It, it's up to yous. I, I won't do it. You haven't talked to, like, pros or.
Lots of them, they haven't, they haven't.
I haven't, I haven't asked, you mean that they didn't spend their Graham insurance or? No, I haven't.
They'd have to take hold of the situation, they, they, they'd have to take control of the bar area. In order to do it.
There wouldn't be a bar.
We're not.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying. Cause I, I do have a little on this, I mean, with Graham insurance.
So do you, so the only way that would work is if they sell something?
No.
Oh.
They'd have to control the area.
So they would have to have their employees.
They, they would be in charge and they're taking over all the responsibility for it. And they're not gonna make any money off of it, I think you're gonna have a heck of a time trying to talk me into.
Well, we can go down our call, you can get back to Lonnie, um.
I could look, we're left to talk, try to talk to our, we usually have one agent, I don't even remember who it is, is it?
For Graham.
K and K?
Who is our agent right now?
Our agent is K and K.
Okay, we'll find out. So if you could get me your policy and then, well, we'll have to discuss with K and K, I see.
Well, how are you gonna, how are you gonna discuss this and do it before our next meeting?
Well, just make the motion contingent, that if it passes our state's attorney that.
So we're gonna dump it on him?
Well, we're not being on her, which says she has to prove that she has special event insurance.
And we're making the motion to give her the waiver contingent on that.
And he won't make the waiver until we've got an opinion from our insurance.
Whether we'd be covered?
Whether we would be covered.
So is somebody making a motion or no one?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I wanna hear the motion.
That we, I will make a motion that we grant a waiver of the Graham insurance. Portion of the contract for the Devil's Lake Arena, Chamber of Commerce to hold their holiday showcase. Contingent upon. Their proof of special events coverage insurance and the. Consent of our carrier at this time.
I'll start that, I might do. And. With the approval of the state's attorney?
There's a motion and a second.
Are, are you okay with his?
Yep.
Addiction?
I'm good with that.
I would like to look policies. Yes.
Okay, who's second?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, uh.
Can I just read this back real quick? Wash my eyes, or I'll probably change the words a little bit. Wash my eyes with a second of brown. That a granting waiver of Graham insurance to the Devil's Lake Chamber of Commerce for the Holiday Showcase. After Lonnie Olson, Ramsey County State's Attorney reviews the special event coverage and. Visits it, visits with K and K Agency, which is our insurance coverage.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I, I have one thing to, I, I think we're asking our state's attorney to be in a position that he shouldn't have to be in. Another thing, I think we're really looking at opening up a case dorms here. That's all I have to say.
Roll call, please.
Martins?
Hi.
Decep?
Name.
Prom?
Hi.
Isen?
Hi.
Olson.
All right, motion carried. And it might, in the future, prompt us to change our policy to close sales instead of just having.
Or.
Because if you have a bar that provides the alcohol for a wedding per se.
Yeah.
They. They might not be selling it to the general public, but they're selling it to the bride's mother. Somebody's paying for it, nobody's paying for this.
So, so let me, let me ask. Let, let me ask what the difference is, is. Does it make a difference if I give you a dollar for a drink or if you give it to me for nothing? Does that make any difference on how intoxicated I'm gonna get?
Nothing makes any difference on how intoxicated you're gonna get, except, except for how much alcohol I will provide to you in my home.
Absolutely.
And that's it, and whatever's in here is that it's a one.
I already asked the question, is, is anybody gonna matter to how many times somebody comes around the circle? And that's, and that's why I say, do you know what? Nobody's, nobody can give me a confirmation here on if somebody can get intoxicated at this event.
Might, it might come back to whether it's sold or given away and might also be. Somewhere around less than an ounce or something like that, so you might have to make some modifications as to what you give them. You know, and things like that, but the, the toxic insurance companies should settle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and you know, if your insurance company says, well, no, you can ask for Graham insurance if you do this, then that's up to you deciding what you're gonna do.
Other than your insurance.
With Graham insurance. Okay.
Door's open if you can get through it.
Yeah, I mean, um.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. No, we're over, so just do Stacy's.
Okay.
Stacy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The reason I'm here is I talked with Mark earlier today, uh, I had, uh, watched the recordings of the, uh, previous meetings. Regarding budgets. Uh, when I submitted my budget, uh, we had no discussion over my salary, but yet you guys had decided at the last meeting that you would. Reduce my, uh, salary by nearly two thousand dollars, uh, from what I had, uh, asked for in the budget. I did a little research, uh, found out across the state. Uh, what new hires, uh, are getting and, uh, comparisons in, uh, hourly wages, monthly wages. And annual salaries. And I've, uh, what I asked for, I thought was in no way out of line. It's what I asked for, uh, last spring. Uh, you guys couldn't afford it at that time, I may remark that come budget time, I would want what I asked for. And I didn't change that number, it didn't go up. So I'm trying to be as fair as I can and I'm not at any point or any way compared to the rest of the state. Out of line from what I'm asking for. And I'd be happy to sit down with anybody and, uh. I got all my information from North Dakota Association of Counties, uh, North Dakota Veterans. Uh, roster that shows everybody's hours, uh, personnel in the office. And, uh, and then with the, uh, North Dakota Association of Counties, I got the, uh, wages. And, uh, with what I showed Mark. Uh, anywhere from, uh, a low in the, uh, just under twenty dollars an hour where. You're proposed me to be to as high as forty plus dollars an hour is the going rate for, uh. Some of the veteran service officers. Uh, the nineteen hundred dollars a month what I proposed is approximately, uh, twenty. Low twenty to twenty-one dollars an hour for Ramsey County. And I'm currently getting twenty-three dollars plus in Nelson County. If you look at an hourly wage. And, uh. I feel that I shouldn't be paid less here for what I'm doing than what I'm doing in Nelson County.
Uh, uh, you said it's twenty-one here and twenty-three there and it's seventeen dollars a month difference.
No.
It's seventeen forty here and seventeen fifty-seven there and fifty-five.
Yeah.
So it's, uh, seventeen.
The hours, three, three and a half hours a day.
No, just let me finish then, or if you, uh, just over seventeen, seventeen dollars and fifty cents and pennies difference. I don't know how that could be three dollars an hour difference.
The, uh, over the course of the month, the number of total hours a month. Uh, three and a half hours a day in Lakota and four hours a day in Devil's Lake, there comes the difference. It's seventeen and a half hours a month in, uh, Nelson. Twenty hours a month, or twenty hours a week, rather, uh, in, in Ramsey. More hours a week in Ramsey than Nelson. So therefore the hour, hourly wage shows that difference.
But you also said you have several clients from that county coming into this county for benefits.
Yeah.
So was that taken into account?
Uh, I, I don't discriminate against any veteran that comes in the door where he's.
No, but you did tell us that you had several clients from both counties coming in here.
Yeah.
We have to, you know, uh, I don't want you to discriminate, but we have to look at.
Yeah.
Because we gotta do the budget, you know?
And that, that's where I'm feeling that I requested nineteen hundred dollars a month last spring. You guys couldn't afford it. And now come budget time, this is when I'm requesting the nineteen hundred dollars a month.
But you also came in, in, when we put the job up. You came and accepted it for what it was and.
Salary was not mentioned in when we interviewed.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Why, we hardly accept a job without.
Uh, after one month, you came and requested a wage increase and we gave you a wage increase after one month. When everybody else is on a one-year probation.
Right.
So we, we gave you a huge bumper right from the start.
But your huge bump doesn't bring me, uh, to the, it isn't to the level where I should be starting a job at?
You, you accepted the job at that.
Yep, but I didn't know that Earl left with a decreased salary, so it wouldn't affect his social security.
That, that, that was all in the books.
I never saw that in the application, never discussed that with anybody.
You, you seen, you seen the wage that you're, that you applied for?
No, never did.
Then how did you apply for an, for an increase?
You, you applied for a job that you, you never even knew?
Less than thirty days. You didn't even give.
Because I didn't know what I was gonna get until we talked with, uh, Elizabeth.
I think it was mentioned Stacy before you accepted the job, what the range was.
What?
It was brought up when we did the.
I need to clarify something here. Um. I'm of the opinion that we need a full-time veteran service officer here.
And I'm agreeing with you.
And I made that very clear when we started budget talks. I made that very clear before you were ever hired or applied for the job. I begged. The former veteran service officer to put money into his coming budget, knowing that he was retiring. To cover such a thing. He tells not to do that.
Mm-hmm.
My problem with giving you these raises is not for one minute because I don't believe you are worth it. It is because I cannot justify giving you a twenty-eight percent raise in nine months. When we have employees that have been here for twenty years. And then they get twenty-eight, uh, twenty-eight percent increase.
Mm-hmm.
They work year after year after year after year. I can't justify doing it in fairness to other employees. One of the reasons I'm having such a problem with the law enforcement center. Those people got the huge raise. How long do you think it's gonna be before the police officers are saying? What are you doing as a police officer? I should be a corrections officer, I'll get paid decent. Why should I be a deputy sheriff at this rate when I could be a corrections officer? And not have to go on the, out on the street? It, it's, it is not because I don't think you're worth the money. I cannot justify giving you a twenty-eight percent increase in salary in ten months. I can't do it, that's my problem.
I can't view it as an increase or a, uh, a raise. I'm looking at it as where the job should have started in the first place. I came in here with nearly eight years' experience and like I told Mark, I've had thirty-seven years of experience dealing with the VA. Now, if you don't pay them based on experience, you're gonna end up with the same situation you got left with. The level of the job has to be accounted for. When you look at new hires in other counties, they're not going by the previous veteran service officer, they're going by the person they brought in. We have new hires in the state that are making nearly, well, nearly four thousand dollars a month for four days a week. This is what I'm talking about, the position warrants a larger pay, not a raise. The position warrants a larger pay scale. Your human resource person, if she could have done her job correctly, would have found out what the other counties in the state are doing.
Excuse me Stacy, I talked to, to Tanya today.
Okay.
And she said that the board has you where they approved the budget at a good raise. That's a very good raise, we gave you a fourteen percent raise after you've been here a month. Most people, when they come in, you should ask when you did the interview. Before you accepted the job, what is my wage? You didn't do that.
Okay, so then I was supposed to be happy and accept Earl's pay?
She also stated that, that we are one of the partner counties in this pay study that they're doing. And when that is finished, we're gonna get a copy of it, so we'll know where we're at. If you look at the Association of Counties for my years' experience that I have here. I'm going under pity too Stacy, all of us are.
It's a typical thing across the state.
It is.
And when it comes time to catch up, this is where you guys are gonna get pinched.
Well, we're trying to catch up, but we can't do it over one year.
The way, the way that we're gonna deal with this Stacy is, is, uh, we're gonna need to justify putting this on a full-time position.
Right.
With a full-time wage.
Okay, then who decides what that full-time wage is gonna be?
We will, yeah.
Okay, and how are you gonna base that?
Well, you'll be able to have, have your discussion at that time. You'll be able to come in and discuss it, we will look to the Association of Counties for their input.
Well, at, at the budget meetings when we submitted our budgets, I brought. Well, at, at the budget meetings when we submitted our budgets, I brought it up about going full-time and doing less time in Nelson County. We need to have, however the commissions would talk to each other.
You know what, if, if you're gonna be full-time here, you can't be part-time in Nelson County. You're either a full-time employee here or you're not.
Okay.
I mean, if you can contract with another county to work outside of your forty hours here, that's fine. But you can't be a full-time employee here and, and keep your halftime job or
So the county gets a contract with other counties?
For what? Are you talking a contract from Nelson County to be a full-time and they would pay us a wage for you? Is that what you're talking like Dunn and Stark does in Billings County?
Right.
See, and that might be part of the answer to this thing is that they might, they might give us money to
That's what I'm saying, yeah, right.
And, and that's where it has to go Stacy.
Yeah.
All our full-time people, like Murda said, are, are climbing up to scale as well. And you're, you're just a part-time employee at this stage of the game.
Mm-hmm.
So, so when we set the wages at, you know, at the final budget hearing, that's the way they have to stay until we change them.
Um, and I might add, our wives, I'm gonna compare you real quick like with, with Walsh County. Their full-time person is earning twenty-nine thirty-six a month. At your current wage, coming up in January, if you were full-time, you'd be earning thirty-five fifteen a month. So you would be earning six hundred dollars a month more than the Walsh County
The Walsh County veteran service officer is just recently hired. He's entry level.
And you know what, so are you.
So are you. But my experience should warrant something.
He does have experience and we discussed all of this Stacy and me.
We did, we
And we, we concluded, we concluded that we could warrant it when you become a full-time employee. We could warrant a full-time wage, but we have to do some study in that. We can't just hand out wage, wage
Well, I suggested we work at the full-time issue faster than what we're doing right now then because at this rate, I will not be sick or not Ramsey County, I can tell you that right now.
Well, we have other applicants involved too Stacy, so don't threaten.
Well, the two applicants that were, so yourself, I consider friends already. I've already been working with them on their own issues. I think if you went and talked to them right now, they'd realize the benefit of having somebody with experience versus someone who hasn't one iota information which one.
Stacy, I, I, I agree with you. I, I realize that you have experience. I consider you a valued employee. But again, I feel that as a commission, with an entire staff to have, we can't just pick one person out and say, "Boy, that person's really good, let's give them a thirty percent raise." And you know, "You're really good too, but you know, you've been here for twenty years and we'll work on it."
Four percent is great.
And four, and two percent, and you had twenty years, it's two percent.
Yeah.
That's good enough. We can't, we can't do that as employers. And I mean, it's
We're, we're, we're seeing a lot Stacy and we're hearing a lot and that's the, being grounds to justify a lot. But we can't do it at this stage of the game.
Okay, well, that's all I have then.
I, I, I got three seconds of conversation here also. You do understand if we do open it for a full-time position, we have to reopen it entirely.
And I welcome that.
So you're gonna get a whole new pool of applicants. And the other thing I kinda like to point out, you know, in the private sector, raises don't go up like this. You're lucky if you get a raise in the private sector, so you know.
But yet in the private sector, you got meritorious raises, you've got bonuses for executives, you've got there's all kinds of other performance bonuses.
Absolutely there is, but there's also a lot of years where you get nothing.
Yeah.
Where you get nothing.
That's where my whole point is
And I worked a lot of years where I got nothing.
What I'm saying is, this is where I should've started. This is what the position should be worth. Regardless of who it is.
Yes, but
The position has to be
But if that's what you felt, you should've brought that up when you applied for the job.
Well, just hold on now, let's hold on.
Yeah, we, I don't
We knew, we knew Earl Hanson was working at a cut rate.
Yeah.
We did.
I mean, we gotta admit that. And the second thing though Stacy, is that the last meeting the budget was set. I mean, it's very difficult for us to change it right now.
Mm-hmm.
It's damn near impossible.
Yeah.
And I couldn't be here at that time.
All the work that you do, and you're doing an excellent job. I, I wish you'd been here, you know, the last meeting, I'm sorry, but
And, and I
Just a minute now. But as a commission, we have to understand Earl was working at a very cut rate. And we talked about raising that, to get it up to a more comparable rate for the rest of the counties in the state. And all we said
And I thought that's what we did with the fourteen percent increase in pay. Three hundred and five, three hundred and eighty dollars, come on.
We didn't have a paper like this when we did that, when we looked at that and compared it to other counties.
I wasn't here, so, so I, I know that, I don't know what this year will look like.
But I mean, you're doing an excellent job. I mean
Oh, it's true.
You know, we've got a lot of vets within our county that need help. And you're doing great with the paperwork, applications that are getting done. And some of the things I hear, you know, that you're doing are just fabulous. Veterans that come in with questions and they get them answered. And they be signed up for the right programs. You know, I think you're playing for your big help to the vets. You know, we're not playing with a bunch of cattle or something, playing with people's lives. But you're doing a very good job. I think we need to address this in the future. But I'm, our map is on the wall, the budget's set. It's just very difficult for us to change something like this now. I'm sorry, but there's nothing more we can really do.
Well, okay, that's the way it is. We'll see how things work out.
Thank you, thank you. Hearing two thousand fourteen appraisal values.
Okay, I have anybody from the cities that are already conscious, but I made a new form on your desk because there was, the first one paid his brother, yeah, his brother came in, took care of it.
Okay, the one with scatsum on top, is that the new one?
That's the old, that's the old one.
Oh, okay.
So disregard that one. Okay. So and we added another line which says other, so you can kinda tell which ones are inundated properties. And then I reviewed these with Jerry, he went through them. And he said, even though he suggested to the board a true and full value, there's some on that shouldn't be because of the fact they're inundated or, you know, like the first four are all inundated property. But the reason why the one in popular vote is sixteen hundred is because there's an abstract that goes with it. This is a piece of property that was turned back into the county way back in two thousand. They went underwater, so they turned it back to us and they gave us the abstract. Somebody was interested in it and in order for us to sell it, we had to put it back on and advertise it. So that's why that one's still on there from way back in two thousand. We do have an eviction notice that I missed on one of the properties, and I'll get to that. The next piece of property is query, and that's just a commercial lot. Devils Lake City, that one is, the first one is in review with the Devils Lake City Commission and the Fire Department due to the fact there was a house fire and it's condemned. So, and I emailed Bonnie, I don't know if you had a chance to review that. There is a hearing on Friday, and Jim will get back to me. It's their recommendation that the county tear it down. So we're probably gonna have to take this one off of there. And also, MDU is right next to this house. MDU is interested in the property for the back taxes and they would tear the house down. So I don't know what the county wants to do with that one. Line might need to research it before we do anything.
So at this point, it, there are three years past due, we're at the point of foreclosure.
Right.
And we have a potential buyer wanting to purchase it and then tear it down, because it's already destroyed basically.
Right, it's got a tarp over it because there was a fire in there and if you go by, and it's right next to MDU, you can see it.
Uh, I just have a question. Can we just sell it without putting in upper bids?
See, I don't, we
I'm, I'm asking.
We can't even put in upper bids because it's condemned, we have to tear it down first.
And then put the lot up for bid.
And then we would, would put up the lottery bids and special discuss against it because we tore it down.
Okay.
So it would be probably, I don't know, it's in a narrow area, what would you think it would cost to tear a house down? That's in between a business and another house, that's really tight.
They're close.
Can I get the job?
No, I just
It's spending, that's why, I mean, I think if, if they buy it and would take the whole sale, I think that's great. I was just questioning whether we can.
Yeah, I don't know.
This is what I have.
I would hope we can, but I don't wanna give you a definite answer.
You would hope we can't.
Not hope we can.
You hope we can't.
I would, if they sell it, I'm just
That'd be an excellent
That, that would be a fabulous seller.
Because like I said, it's condemned.
It's gonna be spending. I'll, I'll put it that way.
So just so you're aware of that one, I, I have to take that one off as because it's condemned.
Then I don't get the job, so I, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, uh, we can expect it to be a spin project.
Yeah. Okay, the next one is three hundred and twenty-five and then we go to the next page. That house is right down eight oh five Fifth Avenue North, or Eastern Northwest, it's down here, did you go by it?
Yep.
Okay. Steve, Nelson, um
Where are you at?
The back, the second page. Back, the back half of the first page.
Back of the first page?
Okay. It's lot eights in the east half and south half, and the south twenty, the west half. It is a house that has been resided, windows, it's got a new roof, it's got, um, two-style garage in the back that's detached, that is gonna work down, but it needs painted and probably shinkled. The inside that they started remodeling, it's, um, needs a lot of work. Steve Nelson and, and, um, sure, went in the basement. There is a furnace and hot water heater, but it was very dark, they couldn't really see. It's just a call space under a one-level home.
But it's not condemned.
No, it's not condemned. It's very, very well sell, sellable, if you wanna say that. The true and full value on it is fifty-one seven. But Jerry thinks the board should go down to twenty-five so we can put it on the option block and it doesn't sit in the county. That would be the starting bid.
Normally we start the starting bid at the
Whatever the taxes are.
The total here, right?
Whatever the last meeting Jerry recommended, we put the true and full value on the property.
So what happens if we put the true and full value, or the twenty-five on there and we don't get any bidders?
Yeah, I
I would think we'd get bidders for twenty-five.
Cause it, it's like I said, it's re-sited, it's about eleven hundred square feet, wouldn't you say?
There's still
Mary Miller's all costs.
There's still a bunch of people that have been remodeling ones and they'd be
And I, it's
But then, wouldn't they be there if we started it at forty-four and would they go to twenty?
Well, they'll work it up to forty-four if they need to work it.
No, 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 I'm talking about the taxes.
That's up to you guys as a board, and that's been the process in the years past, but it's up to you as a board if you wanna put down on it, or I mean
Does it matter where we start?
Nope, as long as we get all the taxes.
We just started at forty-four fifty-eight.
We could, but we could go forty-five, make it an even number, forty-five hundred. Usually we round it out. So what do you guys think?
The auction will
It'll be published in the paper, yeah.
And did they extend any debt sent to you, so we opened up bids?
Nope, we, it's public, it's all public.
Have a jury here, if you don't get, you know, a great draft, I think it's worth more than having us obviously sign a grant.
Well, if we put it into auctions, then we have to sell it.
We, we've got refused any of them, correct, Juan?
I, we have to look at the statutes if there's, if there's a right of refusal, if that's mandated or authorized, and then
Okay.
But like I said, in the past, we've always just collected what the, the taxes are, so.
So now anyone want to put thirty-five hundred? Is that what everybody wishes it? Okay. And then, like I said, the rest of them are pretty explanatory. This is off the subject, is the trailer house in Edmore gone? Please, yes, it is. It was gone, no.
I haven't been on that street, no.
It sits out by the bar and all, Everly's up there.
Just you and
No, it's at two three we have
No, but I mean, it just moved, it went from Edmore to here.
That's good. So it's not Edmore right now.
And then on the last page, um, see, there is, which one I left? The second one down in Lawton City, the Oster property. That's the one I need to do the eviction notice on.
Is there somebody living there?
Somebody we found out today from the city auditor, she, we called her reform, she said there was nobody there and she had the wrong parcel. So, um, and then also Starkwater, their city jury recommends that one go down to forty-seven. Cause he's been out there, he hasn't been lived in for two years now. Last year, one of the nieces paid for the taxes, but she lives out of state somewhere, she just decided. And the majority of it you can see is specials. The city of Starkwater's been assessing like nine hundred to eight hundred dollars per year for mowing. I think it's a lot.
So there's a house there also?
Yes. That's a house, and it's liable, that one's got new shingles, I think you're remodeling inside right now, so. So with that, if anybody wants a motion to accept it, and we'll have
Or for seven.
The sale on November eighteenth at five forty-five PM. Okay, all second where the changes is discussed, okay?
Then a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried.
Mr. Carroll, you have one minute to break.
One minute?
Two minutes.
Okay. Okay, we do the redemption. Need a motion on that?
Yes.
Need a motion for Elizabeth to, to evict. So, is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried. Unfinished business and willer lease agreement.
And we sent him that in from his attorney, so we'll just put it up on follow-up.
Okay. New business, prove health club credit.
And that kinda runs in line with our health insurance, it's just if anybody goes to work out any health club twelve times a month, they get a twenty-dollar credit, so I just made it in the math for the board to approve it.
So
Motion in the second, all in favor say aye. Aye. All the same sign. Motion carried. Review letter from North Dakota Department of Transportation. That's just for your information. Review and approve West Side O and M and Nail Construction Building.
I'll get you back up just a second. I, um, I had a real question about this letter that they sent us. So if there, if nobody's been killed out there, then it's okay to leave the Steven at sixty-five mile an hour? Is that what the deal is? Yeah, we did a study and there weren't enough accidents, so we don't warrant lowering the Steven.
I'm not gonna scream with anything you say, but where can we, where can we do it? Like, they did, they did their study. I, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know what we could do from this point on.
The only more leverage that we could take right now is probably homeowners, airport, school system, you know,
You know.
Letters back and stuff like
No, maybe, maybe if the, the NFTs would, you know, start sending No, may, maybe if the, the NFPs would, you know, start sending, I, I'm just saying, you know, I, I thought we did what we could and they overruled us. I, I'm just saying, I, I don't know whether.
I, I realize that, but I'm not happy with the letter that says, you know, nobody's died out there yet, so we don't think we should lower the speed limit. There haven't been accidents out there yet, so.
We're on record asking for it, so.
Yeah, and I guess that's what, what matters, that, you know, when the school bus supervisor calls and, and is, has concerns, that, you know, I just think.
I see, you know, he needs to send someone to.
And I think that there, that there will be some follow-up bills, both from.
Tom, I ain't called?
I got him, wait, he was.
He called the county?
No, he called, he, I, he had me. And, and said that there was a little issue out there because when the bus comes.
Why don't we contact the state?
They will.
Well.
They will, cause I am.
I wish I would've known that before this, cause I wouldn't have let the letter from the county go unless it went along with one of the schools.
Well, and that's what I said, you know, this is something that the school and the residents of the, need to address if it's a, in being concerned.
Yeah, well, we sent the letter ourselves with the county, you know, it's sort of like, you know. Yeah, we, it's their obligation to take care of it. We can make recommendations, but if that's the school history, it's gonna carry a bigger recommendation than the county, especially.
I'll say by way of school.
If there's kids' health concern nuts, that carries a lot more weight than just, uh, phone the board thing. I think it might be nice.
Well, and, you know, we really.
I have people telling me to leave it all.
Well, and like I said, I'm guessing that those people are the people who don't live on the highway and have children getting on the highway.
They travel the road.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I think once they get old, women need to work.
Cause you're gonna get your gun loaded to, uh, change something on the state highway, you're gonna get all of the, yeah, you can ball.
Yep.
That you possibly can.
One bullet.
It's a lesson learned, yeah.
It's a six hundred dollar fine going around the bus with them.
Play. Yeah, but school buses have a lot of gravity.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, on any road.
And, and, and you know, it shows right here, that they, that there's been a.
I wouldn't be able to do that, so.
All right, okay.
Now review, approve West Side O N M and Nail Construction Building.
And what is elevator two? Tambo's elevator.
All, all of the other, okay, sure.
All moved to. They want fifty percent of the cost of the elevator up front.
Is that right?
And that was in the contract, yes.
That O N M, why is it on?
And that's the only one. The O N M is the city of Devils Lake and I attached the agreement, I think I attached it.
Yeah, I did.
And, yeah. It's basically, it was supposed to be thirty percent. She wrote the wrong number on it, so that's thirty percent of the county cost of. And if you see all the bills on that grill. Yeah, yeah, so we're still under budget for this, cause our budget at sixty dollars and then we're at, I think we're at forty-seven.
Misagreeing, quarterly budget?
Yes, quarterly. And that, the, um, thirty percent, I think they're gonna do once a year is my understanding.
Yeah.
That's for mowing, the maintenance, um, the employee that watches it, robs. Pretty detailed.
Good motion?
I don't, she did.
Motion, is there a second? Second? Oh.
This is in the discussion. Is that the final bill for me?
I know, if you look at the second page, it's, um, eighty-nine point nine seven percent. So there will be a smaller bill, there's not much of a balance left, so. And they'll hold on to it until the project is complete, there's a retention free, did you see that?
Yeah, if, if, if you, uh, hear from that one yet, that you want.
That rough. That rough?
Yeah. It's very rough, cause the other.
What the press, what the, just saw the press.
Yeah.
It's very, it's very.
Sometimes I think, I'm not telling Kevin's attention, I hope he gets it done before we go anywhere. It isn't bad when you hit the ruts or, or the culverts that came in.
Yeah.
With the pickup, we hit them with the truck.
Yeah, I know.
My God, before the front tires are coming off.
I know. But I think that was rough, I don't know if they can do anything about it, but, uh, I talked to Rick Johnson about it, he, he said he's gonna scan the people that come in there with their trucks and stuff and see.
I thought it was good too, first time in the car, it wasn't a truck.
The pickup's fine.
So, before we finally do the final bid, they'll roll over with their backer or something maybe. I'll talk to Kevin about it, I did.
We'll change it at this point.
Uh, probably won't change it at this.
Not, not at this point, we can change.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second.
Wrong. Ethan? Burns?
Aye.
Eisler, Bobby, Olson.
Aye, motion carried.
O N M, Wilson, please.
Are there any announcements?
We have a transfer. Yes.
Oh, I didn't see that one. Motion to transfer funds.
O N M goes from, it goes from the support county services.
Social services.
It just transfers from one fund to another, it won't be too.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in, same sign, motion carried.
Announce.